There you go.
Welcome back, opening the Sacramento City Unified School Board meeting. And it is now a little bit after 6:30, and we're ready to start Welcome Community. To begin, Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.2 Broadcast Statement, Member Segura.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Saturday, March 23 at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, March 25 at 12:00 p.m. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located in the back of the room and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
It would have helped to turn my mic on. 5.0 Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Sessions. Oh, my bad, I'm sorry. I was so excited to hear about the stellar student, I wanted to get all the announcements out of the way. So, I digress. 4.3 Our Stellar Student. Board Member Villa, go for it.
Okay, we are excited for this one. So, Kay Tong Lee is a 6th grader at Suyu Elementary, and as a younger student, he struggled to stay engaged at school and was often absent. In 4th grade, that all changed when his favorite teacher, Ms. Safar, believed in him and helped him get back on track. He is now an A student with excellent attendance. Kay Tong is on student council, helps in the library, and is a leader and mentor at school. As a bilingual student, he often volunteers to help translate to Cantonese for school events and shows up early to help set up. Kay Tong's goal is to attend Arizona State University and get a degree in software engineering. Now, I also want to notate here that you wrote this about yourself, which I love. What a wonderful thing to be able to hype yourself up and tell everybody how amazing you are. So, good for you. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
I'll say thank you for the award, and I'm extremely excited.
Wonderful. Well, we have an award for you, and we'd like to come down and take a picture with you if that's okay.
That's adorable.
I was so happy for that.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, stellar student. Item number 5.0 Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Phillips. There are three announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the Board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH Case Number 2023120718 by a vote of 6 to 0 with Member Pritchett absent. Second, the Board approved an amended settlement agreement regarding special education services by a vote of 6 to 0 with Member Pritchett absent. Interim Superintendent Allen will read the third announcement.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the Board approved the following appointment. By a vote of 6 to 0 with Board Member Pritchett absent, the Board approved the appointment of Kaylee Gomez de Cervantes as Principal of Father Keith B. Kenny.
Okay, moving on to item 6.0 Agenda Adoption. Call for a motion. Ms. Villa, Mr. Rhodes. Roll call, Madam Superintendent.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett. Sorry, Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Public Comment, Item 7.0. Public Comment.
We do have two speakers signed up.
Okay.
Katie Robb and Jeremy Till.
All right. Ms. Robb, the mic is yours. You have two minutes. Ah, there we go. Hello? There it is. How about now?
Yes, thank you, thank you, appreciate your time this evening. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Katie Robb. I'm a parent of two students over at Washington Elementary. I'm also the president of the Locomotive Community Organization, or LCO as our acronym is known. Many of you may have already gotten a letter from the LCO regarding after-school waitlist and enrollment process. If you haven't got that letter, please let me know. This is an issue that the LCO has taken up the last couple of months. What we've experienced at our school is that we have a number of students who are still on the waitlist for after-school programming, particularly in our TK and our kindergarten classrooms. It's created quite the stress and trauma for some of our parents who have had to reduce workloads, or some parents have even had to quit jobs because they don't have after-school care. The LCO the last couple of months has been meeting with the center, who is the after-school provider there, and even district leadership has come out to meet with us. And where we are is that we're asking for support from the Board to come together as a community to find solution around the long waitlist and the enrollment process. You know, in talking with the center, they have named that they've encountered challenges, and we know this across the Board with hiring and onboarding, but also in the enrollment process itself. And I could attest to this from having been in the after-school program for three years. We actually don't even find out if we have a spot in the after-school program until a few days before school starts. And this is a common theme across our school, and I can only imagine it's a common theme across the district. And so, we're here, you know, asking, can we move in partnership as community and school board and leadership to find solution for next year so that we can not be back here in the same spot next year? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Robb. Next speaker, please. Floor is yours, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Till. Like Katie, I'm a parent at Washington Elementary, and I'm actually a parent of one of the students still on the waitlist. I'm a kindergartner. And speaking on behalf of the other kindergarten families, this year has been a real struggle for us, balancing our jobs and trying to provide for after-school care for our children. And, you know, all of us have struggled at our jobs. I know people who have lost their jobs and others whose jobs are at risk currently because of the situation. So, like Katie said, like, I really think we need support to, in the process, you know, to make sure that we're starting early to accurately assess the needs of the incoming classes and to staff up as, you know, with the center as well as possible to meet that need. We need funding to make sure that the center can retain staff members in the after-school programs and not be losing them constantly. And we need much better communication from the, both from the district and the providers to know our realistic chances of getting a spot in the after-school program and early on so that we can put in realistic and long-term solutions if need be. Because a lot of us, because we don't have a clear sense of when we might expect to get a spot, we've only been putting in short-term solutions, which don't really work that well. And that's how we've ended up with people whose jobs are at risk because of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Till. Any other comments, sir? Can't see his face, so we're moving on our way to.
We do not have any others.
Thank you. 8.0 Communications. 8.1 Employee Organization Reports, first up, SETA. Good evening, Ms. Malewski, it's all yours.
Board President Villa, members of the Board, and Superintendent Allen. I'm Nikki Malewski, I'm president of the Sacramento City Teachers Association, and I'm happy to report that things continue to progress in our district. On Tuesday, we held the first meeting of our joint SEUSD/SETM-TSS Design Committee. For the first time in nearly a decade, administrators and educators from across the district began the important work of developing a major SEUSD programmatic and cultural initiative with far-reaching implications that will impact every component of our students' learning experience. Such a constructive undertaking is only possible because of the new direction of the supermajority of this Board, which had the courage and commitment to have undertaken this past summer and with Superintendent Allen leading the charge with her team. Before you tonight is another important matter that would never have been possible under previous leadership of Jorge Aguilar and the previous Board majority. Not only did Aguilar and those Board members provoke and lose an eight-day strike after continually and repeatedly misleading the community about the district's finances, but they then walked away from the table in the spring of 2022 when we had an agreement to make up the eight lost days that school year. And the loss of that opportunity subjected our district to a $47 million penalty. Fortunately, and as a product of the district's new direction, we are able to overcome the previous failed leadership. At the last SEUSD School Board meeting, the Board unanimously approved our new collective bargaining agreement, an agreement that had been ratified by 97.7% of our members. Included in that agreement is a memorandum of understanding that adds 16 instructional days to students' calendars, 8 in 2024-25 and 8 in 25-26. A win for students. This agreement creates a foundation for the district to apply for a waiver for the State Board of Education that would allow us to avoid that $47 million penalty and enable those dollars to be spent where they're needed the most in our classrooms and for our students. Another win for our students. And finally, this is an opportunity for us to model behavior that shows that when we work together, great things are possible. An even greater win for our students and our community. While we recognize that there are a few who are clinging to the past, there's great momentum and overall feeling of hope and goodwill in Sac City Unified. And we appreciate the leadership of the supermajority of the School Board for having the commitment to our students to make the change necessary to move SEUSD in the direction our community has been advocating for. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next up, SEIU. TCS. Teamsters. UPE. Moving on. District Advisory Committees, Student Advisory Council. CAC Community Advisory Committee. D-LAC, District English Learner Advisory Committee. Local Control Accountability Plan, Parent Advisory Committee, LCAP. BAAAAB. Community Schools Advisory Committee. And last but not least, Native American Parent Committee. See none. Moving on to item 9.0 Special Presentation. 9.1 Approved Resolution Number 3394, Recognition of Women's History Month, March 2024. Ms. Tara Jean.
Thank you, President Phillips. We are halfway through, or most of the way through now, our celebration of Women's History Month, and it's been a wonderful month to see pink and purple and celebrate all things women. I'm not going to read the resolution. I just want to point out just a couple of things that we're, I think, particularly proud of. I'm really proud of the fact that our district is always encouraging pathways for our young girls and encouraging, like, there are a lot of careers and there are a lot of options, and you can do any of them that you want. We also want to, you know, uplift the changing, the under-representation of women in the non-traditional careers and the fact that our programs are supporting that as well. I'm honored that one of our whereas's celebrates women in elected office because wherever decisions are made, women need to be. And I'm very happy that our Board has a majority female presence, which is exciting. There isn't a statement here about the incredible women that lead our district because if you look around at our folks here, we have many amazing women, including our interim superintendent, our interim deputy super, our chief academic officer, and our chief financial officer are all women. So, just celebrating the incredible contributions of women in our school district. And of course, our many, many teachers and caregivers and aides and cafeteria workers and janitors and bus drivers and folks in the office and everybody that contributes to giving our students the future they deserve. So, just celebrating all of those wonderful folks. And with that, I move we approve this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. Moved and seconded by Ms. Villa. Roll call, please. No, no, no. Do we have any public comment on that?
We do not.
Okay, keep it moving. Roll call, please.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
I'm sorry, student.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Moving on. This is me. Approving Resolution Number 3395, Recognition of Trans Day of Visibility. And again, it's long, but most of it needs to be read, so. So, Resolution Number 3395. Whereas on March 31, 2009, trans activist Rachel Crandall started the International Transgender Day of Visibility to bring trans and gender nonconforming people together and celebrate their contributions to society as well as raise awareness of discrimination faced by trans and gender nonconforming people. And whereas International Transgender Day of Visibility is a time to celebrate the lives and achievements of transgender, non-binary, gender nonconforming, and gender diverse individuals around the world and to recognize the strength, courage, and determination it takes to live openly and authentically. And whereas International Transgender Day of Visibility is also a time to raise awareness of the discrimination and violence that the transgender community still faces, which make it difficult and unsafe for many transgender people to be visible. And whereas the transgender community has suffered disproportionately in many ways, including by workplace and educational discrimination and being subject to violence, and these forms of oppression are exacerbated for transgender people of color, people with limited resources, immigrants, and people living with disabilities. And whereas transgender students experience high rates of bullying, victimization, and harassment at school on the basis of their actual or perceived gender identity or that of their associates, and whereas this bullying, victimization, and harassment can lead to negative mental health outcomes, negative educational outcomes for transgender students, including higher dropout rates, higher rates of absenteeism, and lower post-secondary school aspirations. And these outcomes are markedly worse for transgender students of color. Whereas the district has a responsibility to ensure that all students who reside within its boundaries, regardless of gender identity and gender expression, can safely access a free public K-12, pre-K-12, education. And whereas the district welcomes and supports all students regardless of gender identity and gender expression. And whereas creating a welcoming and safe school environment for transgender students, staff, families, and caregivers makes our school community more welcoming and safe to all. And whereas transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people continue to bravely tell their stories and advocate for full equity under the law. Now therefore, be it resolved that by the Sacramento City Unified School District that the district supports the goals and ideals of the International Transgender Day of Visibility, be it further resolved that every school within the district shall commit to maintaining a safe climate for LGBTQIA+. Lots of letters to explain everyone. Be it further resolved that the district has procedures to address anti-LGBTQ bullying and harassment, which includes procedures for how students may report bullying and harassment and prohibit retaliation against any student for reporting bullying and harassment. The district will ensure that Title IX coordinators receive appropriate training on LGBTQ issues and require schools to track and report data on incidents of anti-LGBTQ bullying and harassment. Be it further resolved that the district will fly the transgender pride flag on March 22, 2024, that is tomorrow, in early observation of International Transgender Visibility Day due to schools and district offices being closed March 25 through March 31. Thank you.
We do not.
Can I call for a motion? Ms. Jean moved. Second, Ms. Villa.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you. Moving on. Item 9.3. Okay. Absolutely. All right, so we're going to skip a bit here. Public Hearing, 10.1 Secondary World Languages, Instructional Materials. A lot of recommendations. And the floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Is it working? Okay. So, we're running a little bit early, so the team I was going to introduce is not here. But good evening anyway, Board President Phillips, interim superintendent Allen, and members. I'm Shannon Pella, Deputy Chief of Academics. And Kari Loofing, who is not here yet because, again, we're running an hour early tonight, which is, yeah. I just, I wanted to acknowledge that she also helped coordinate this adoption along. Thank you. Every time. Along with the teachers listed here, let me just double-check and see. Nope, that's okay. So, I just wanted to also credit Sifu Yapo Cha, an author and Mong language teacher at Luther Burbank, Sensei Tadashi Suzuki, a Japanese language teacher at John F. Kennedy High School, Madame La Bord Le Gravre, who teaches French at McClatchy, and her also-French teacher colleague, Madame Du Perron at Rosemont, Frau Templeton, German language teacher at McClatchy, and Senora Escalera from Luther Burbank. These are six of the 27 piloting teachers who will probably come tonight at some time, so I just wanted to make sure that they are acknowledged. So, world languages, as you know, but it bears repeating, that world languages play a critical role in not only interpersonal communication, but also building cultural awareness and sensitivity. Furthermore, multilingualism is one of the leading assets for advancing in both college and career. And so, the adoption of high-quality, standards-based curricula is squarely rooted in our guiding principle and core values. We've got some terms here for your reference as I briefly overview the adoption process. So, this process will typically, if not always, begin with the CDE. The CDE will adopt standards, publish frameworks, and review curriculum very, very carefully, heavily vetted with experts across the state. After that, our team in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, along with Library Textbook Services, reviews where we are in our current adoptions, requests a budget. And then after that, we launch instructional materials adoptions, like the one I'm here to talk about tonight. So, our Gen Ed adoptions for K-12 are typically adopted for eight years. And our AP instructional materials typically go through a six-year cycle. College Board tends to update their course descriptions, and then therefore, everything changes in the need for materials tends to be more frequent. At the point where we have been in the past of requesting budgets is now passed because we've got $5 million that have been allocated to world languages. You can see it's relatively consistent with other adoptions, given the size of the number of world languages courses and the need for professional learning. We have found, and you will see later when I show you the cost slides, that it was actually a very, a very well-predicted amount. So, we follow very closely, we follow Board policy, and I just want you to, I just want to point out that in our Board Policy 6161.1, the majority of each evaluation committee members shall be teachers, which ours was. We had 27 participating teachers, which is a remarkable number, given that we have about 40 world languages teachers in our district, so that's well over 50%. And then we had two administrators, myself and Kari Loofing. I'd also like to credit Erin Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, for leading three, sorry, instructional materials adoptions in the short time that she's been in her position. And also credit Library Textbook Services by name, Kimberly Chang, Ciara Campbell, and Eric Crady, without whom the textbooks in our district would not be where they need to be, which is in the hands of kids. So, once we worked with SETA leadership to establish a steering committee, we sent out a letter for all world languages teachers to join and participate in the process. And again, we were really happy to get the number that we got. The process and timeline, it started in April of 2023. We got together, we convened multiple times with teachers and with SETA leadership to talk about the process because this is, even though we do have a very clear Board policy, this really is something that needs to be driven and designed by the teachers. So, we moved from April, May, June through July, which was our first pre-screening, which I'll talk about in a later slide, and then into the piloting process, which started in fall. And for two separate eight-week cycles, the piloting teachers evaluated the materials selected in February, and here we are making the recommendation to you in March. And here we are making the recommendation to you in March. So this slide is just to show you the number of teachers and the representation. We had every world language represented. We also had all five of our comp high schools plus West Campus represented. So we had a, we did have a very representative group of piloting teachers. So when we prescreened, we started off with multiple publishing companies. And that is not only a very good practice, but that also is part of what is located in board policy, that you start off, and you know, we spent a week prescreening down from sometimes up to five different programs down to the two that teachers would pilot. And again, the two that teachers decided to pilot, that was, you know, entirely their choice. Kari and I facilitated that process, but that was the teacher decisions. So for Spanish, they piloted from CLET and Vista. Those are the names of the publishing companies. Spanish for Heritage Speakers Carnegie and Vista, French Carnegie and Vista, German Carnegie and CLET. And then the Japanese language teachers decided Cheng and Sui from the, just from the get-go. And that, you know, worked out fine. They'd used those materials in the past. They considered some other materials, but they really just knew that that was what they wanted to go with from the beginning. So anyway, then the Chinese language teacher piloted between Cheng and Sui and Carnegie. And then the selections are all listed there. And we'll, I'll show you what those look like at the end. And then AP materials, I just want to do a quick glance around the room to see if Kari has arrived. And she hasn't. So I will also just show you here that the AP teachers with Kari's leadership went through the same process. Again, they screened down to two, except for the AP Japanese and Chinese. They were very happy with the program that they selected. And then they made their selections in February. And those, along with the Gen Ed selections, are here for recommendation. We also, and we actually still have this upstairs, we have print materials from all of the programs displayed upstairs for parents and community members to come in and give some input. We had multiple postings from our comms team through Parents Square, the website, our website, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn, and the Scroll newsletter to give feedback. The evaluation criteria that teachers used in order to make their selection were based on the world languages framework and are divided into these five categories. And I'll go into each of these a little bit further in the next slides. So what I've got here are, we did a very lengthy set of surveys, probably just like the history adoption. I think many of the piloting teachers will say, Shannon, that was a lot of questions in the survey. But we, I'm just putting a couple here just to show you how, what the average looked like in the end in terms of whether or not there was strong evidence, adequate evidence, or limited or no evidence for each of those five categories of evaluation. So for standards alignment, you can see there was either strong or adequate program organization, either strong or adequate evidence. The assessment and the instructional planning and support pieces as well, again, majority strong evidence for both of those as well. And this is all teacher evaluation as they were piloting the programs. Access and equity, same overwhelmingly strong evidence for both images that depict students that reflect the diversity of California and that are also appropriate to use with all students. So I'll go over the highlights from the AP instructional materials. There are some further criteria that those materials have to address. One is that they have to align to the most current revised course exam descriptions. That, again, the online materials have to include access to practice exams, and they have to include AP-style questions. The updated materials have to be able to work for the life of the adoption, which, as I said earlier, is about six years for AP, that they support engagement and success in the AP exam, and that they include authentic listening and speaking scenarios. So those were some of the highlights that Kari pulled from the evaluation of the AP materials. Okay, so cost. So the cost of materials is listed here. We have landed well under the $5 million, which should give us plenty of money left in the budget for the type of ongoing and deep and much-needed professional learning for world languages teachers and that they want and that they have asked for, not only for instructional materials adoption, but also to just be aligned pedagogically with the world languages standards. So the next steps, if you should approve the recommendations tonight, are that, well, we've already done, Library Textbook Services has already analyzed the inventory needs and has given forecasted numbers. That's why we have the prices that we have listed, because those are based on enrollment forecasts. So then they will make the purchases. They will receive an inventory, the materials, distribute. And then by August, teachers should have them. And then, of course, any additional materials that sites need, that they will ask for directly through LTS. And I put the link there just to remind myself to make sure that everybody in the system knows that they can go on that link in order to request additional materials. Okay, so I got a little ahead of myself, and I think I said the first two things. I'll just also add that one of the next steps that will need to happen is teachers will need to work together to co-create curriculum maps and embed or facilitate the use of the assessments that are already embedded in the curriculum to develop high-quality world languages instruction. That will happen in the professional learning and the collaboration. I keep peeking, thinking maybe somebody has come to help answer the questions, and they haven't, but that's okay. I just thought it would be nice for you to see a visual of the beautiful materials that they selected. And I also think that it bears mentioning that Sifu Yapocha is both the author and the Mong language teacher of the materials that you see on the board here. So that is a uniquely wonderful program. All of our world languages teachers do an amazing job bringing multilingualism, multilingualism and literacy to bear on our already rich, linguistically diverse community. So I can answer questions if you have any, probably not as beautifully as the world languages teachers would have.
Thank you, Ms. Pella. That was a public hearing. And we're moving to the action portion. But first, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Any questions, comments from my colleagues? Okay, Ms. Jean?
Thank you. I am, every time I thought I had a question, you pretty much answered it. But I did want to just clarify a few things. I'm looking at the process and timeline. When were these resources made available to the public for their viewing?
So we started in January. And we had the display upstairs in print. And then we also had links to digital access to the publishers themselves. And then we also had access digitally to a feedback form, as well as a QR code upstairs for each of the print materials. So from January to, they're still up there today.
I did see them. And I was just like, I would just want to make sure that we all know that there's wonderful access to ensure that you can check out these resources if you have questions about the decisions that are being made. You brought up professional development. Have you put together the, because, you know, as a teacher, I was thinking, one, it's getting trained in the program and feeling, especially now that it's not just, here's a book. It's usually there are online resources, and it's how do these integrate with our learning management system? As well as pacing guides and curriculum apps and all those pieces. So are you putting a plan together for all those layers?
There will be a plan. So thank you for asking that because it really is so much more than just being trained to use, you know, a teacher's guide. I mean, anybody can do that. And our teachers are way too smart and creative to just be provided that. So that will be happening. It will actually be happening in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. I will consult and support, but that will be done by our new Director of Professional Learning. And to whatever extent I can support that, I will. But absolutely, there will be a need to really also focus on the shifts in world languages pedagogy over the years, which has really kind of mimicked the kinds of shifts that we've seen in ELA pedagogy, where a shift away from that isolated grammar and drill-and-kill instruction and more into communication. And I could, I won't.
You and I could have so many conversations about that? Yeah, it's the, if my phone can do it, what is it I need to learn to do with my, with the resources? And then my third larger question. I haven't heard anything specifically recently, but I know that there have been concerns about the process of getting the textbooks, getting them catalogued, getting them to school sites, getting them in the hands of our educators and getting them in the hands of students. And there's kind of two layers to that. One is, as an educator, no, we don't work over summer, but we totally do. So getting these into people's hands so that over the summer they could review them on their leisure if they wanted to, kind of thing. You mentioned August, which feels a little late, but I also know it's just the nature of the beast of ordering texts. And then there have been concerns. I've gotten emails from teachers in the past about like, I'm not getting my text for three or four weeks into the school year, and that's a challenge. So I don't know that that's your department, but you know, how do we, how do we ensure that the process of this is as efficient as we can make it, knowing that it's also based on textbook, and everyone's ordering, and everyone's trying to get them? So if you have anything to add to that situation?
Yes. Well, the, I think that, first of all, that this one might just be the earliest of the last three because of the number of courses. So hopefully, you know, just in the time that I've been here and that Erin Hansen has been leading, you know, and again, I credit her for really, you know, taking the charge to get updated textbooks, you know, very seriously. So we had, she led science. And then, as you know, I was here last year for history, social sciences, and now world languages. So hopefully, three times, third times a charm, and we'll get things out as early as possible. But I definitely can have conversations with LTS to also see if they need support with barcoding and, you know, how we can help get those sorts of processes as efficient as possible. So.
Thank you so much.
I will, I will take that to the folks who.
I appreciate that. It's just, as a teacher, you get really stressed pretty quick. And any way we can alleviate that, because the job's hard enough. So thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. Ms. Sikura?
I think that this is awesome. I do have a small question. Is there a streamlined way for students who are taking an AP language course that may not be offered at their high school, but they're trying to self-study for a test? Is there a way for them to access these updated resources and materials?
You know, that is a great question. And I can follow up with you on that because, you know, I want to say, yes, there can be if there isn't already. But I can find out for sure, find out what the path would be. I can talk to our EdTech Coordinator and find out how to get, how to make sure that kids can have access. And I'll get, I'll get that information to you. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Member Singh?
Thanks. It's just a comment, quick. I just want to mention that I was a world language teacher. So I understand the difficulty in actually finding books, especially for languages. So it's really exciting to see that our Mong teacher is also the one who wrote the book. Because at some point, you start to think you might as well write the book because there's not enough materials out there, especially with some of these larger printers. So it's really good to see that folks got to choose and kind of pick and choose what they felt comfortable with because surprisingly, there is a difference with the printers to know what they're teaching and what type of curriculum they're following, and even the actual cultural competencies that they talk about in the actual material. So this was just nice to see that teachers were involved in actually picking and choosing what they think was the best option for their students. So thank you.
Thanks, Member Singh. Any of my other colleagues have anything they want to share this evening? That is an action item as well, so.
So move.
Yeah. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye, I apologize.
Member Kiara?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
All right. Next step, 9.3. Presentation on Information to Approve State Board of Education Waiver Request for 2021-22 Instructional Time Penalty for Sacramento City Unified School District, Bowling Green Charter School, and New Joseph Bonheim, sorry, New Joseph Bonheim and George Washington Carver and New Technology High School. I think we just changed that name. Sorry, I can't remember what it was. Haven't done it yet? Oh.
I think it's going through the process.
Ah, okay.
I don't think it's officially, but. Good evening. President Phillips, Superintendent, members of the board. I'm Consey McCarron, your Chief Human Resource Officer, and I'll be talking with you about the State Board of Education waiver request. That's before you in a couple different ways. So first, we'll be talking about the California Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and SCTA for the Sacramento City Teachers Association as some acronyms that we'll use as I talked through this presentation this evening. So first, this is, what we want to say is an opportunity to provide additional instructional days for students. That's where we want to start. These eight additional days in two school years, 2425 and 2526, eight days in each, the State Board of Education waiver must be approved by first, the school board, and then the Department of Ed at the State Board of Education meeting, which is scheduled to take place beginning of May. And the reason that we are here and trying to request these additional eight days and waiver from the State Board of Education is because we received an instructional time penalty for the shortage of instructional days and minutes for going without instruction between March 23rd and April 22nd, 22nd of '22. So during that time, given the lack of instruction that took place, we have to, we want to do something about that. We want to ensure that while students who lost those instructional minutes and days at that time obviously lost those instructional days and minutes at that time. We want to try to put things in place as we move forward to help get additional instructional time back for students as we move forward. So in addition to the district, our four dependent charter schools, Bowling Green Charter School, New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter School, George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science, and New Technology High School also received this audit finding for a shortage of time. So they're included, and that's why you see the district as a whole. And then you see each of the four charter schools. So this waiver will be for all five. Now, the charter schools are considered separate because they're a local educational agency, and as I said, have to submit their own waiver. So what this informational item is going to talk about are all those pieces. But what you have on consent relate to, that's why you have so many pieces. You have it for the district for 2425, and you have it for each of the charter schools for 2425. As a district, the next few slides go over, as an entire district, per grade level, the shortage from 2122, as you can see, eight days, what the minutes calculated out to, and what that will look like if we are able to get the State Board of Education, if you approve and approve for us to submit this waiver to the State Board of Education, what we will be looking to waive and get permission for. This shows the Bowling Green Charter School. And I'm really just going to show each of them so you get a sense of what was missed and what we're asking to be waived, given the shortage, to add to upcoming school years. Before you hear, you see New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter School. Again, the minute shortage for each of those grade levels. George Washington Carver School of Arts. And New Technology High School. It's a lot of missed instructional time and days. And important, one of the reasons we wanted to come back. we wanted to come back is to be able to, again, although not the same students, provide for the system, additional instructional days added to the calendar for the next two years. So this particular ed code section, 46206, allows the State Board of Education to waive penalties if the district shows that it is going to make up that time plus, right, that time on top of what is already there for two consecutive school years. And so that might be a question, right? We missed eight days, we missed instructional minutes, why are we adding 16 over two years? It's, it's because of this particular ed code section, and the same for charter schools, different ed code sections, 47612.6, but similarly, needing to make up the time on top of the traditional school year for two consecutive school years. So to do that, we had to reach an agreement. The district and SCTA have reached an agreement on the proposal to add these additional instructional days and minutes to 2425 and 2526, and that was approved by you all, by the board, at our last board meeting in March as part of the agreement. So a successful SBE waiver for this instructional time penalty will help us ensure that the funds that would otherwise go to pay that penalty will instead be used to improve student achievement by addressing meaningful, adding meaningful instruction to supplement learning, engagement, and socialization. While this is available on the district's website, as well was available at the back of the room and on Board Agenda on March 7th Board Meeting, this is the example, not an example, this is the agreement reached and that the board approved to add those makeup days for students in 2425 and 2526. Now, I'll just pause briefly on each of these snapshots intended to show that for both years, again, it's adding eight days to next school year, as well as the 2526, in a number of different ways. So the traditional student calendar is one that the board approves every year, and as part of this waiver agreement, what you will see is it represented for two years, adding the eight days at the beginning of the school year, then would start school on August 19th. You can see it highlighted in yellow, ending school on June 12th, purple being holidays. For 2526, similarly, adding the eight days at the beginning of the school year would start school for students on August 18th in the 2526 school year and end June 11th. So each of these that goes through, the board usually approves the Adult Education Attendance Calendar, so you can see that listed on here. And while many of them are the same, they follow traditional calendars, it's important, just so that you have each one broken out as the application waiver requires. There's 2526. So New Technology High School would start August 9th next year, August 8th the year after. George Washington Carver would start August 19th, follows the traditional track, and the 18th for the next year, 2526. Bowling Green Charter School would start again August 19th, following the traditional calendar, which would mean August 18th for the 2526 school year. New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter would start August 5th. They traditionally start a little bit sooner anyways, and they have opted to make some adjustments throughout their calendar year and would end June 11th. Similarly, for the 2526 school year, starting Monday, August 4th, ending the 10th. And so as part of that, the online submission, which if you approve this, the, the district is then prepared to go on to the State Board of Education system and actually apply for the waiver. And so this is an example of things that we would be putting into the system in order to show our submission, trying to get this on the May State Board of Education Agenda. These are just examples of things we would be including, uploading, and confirming the direction of the board. So for next steps, we want to ensure a successful waiver application so that the instructional time penalty of time and days will be, will, yeah, will ensure that the funds would otherwise be used to pay the penalty would instead go in this direction in terms of the additional days. The consent items that you approve will authorize the district staff to go ahead and file that waiver request to get on the State Board of Education Agenda. They meet at the beginning of May, and as we understand it, we would know right away if we are approved or not, because we recognize it's incredibly important to tell families as soon as possible. We recognize that May is late. And at the same time, that's, that's the earliest we can get on the board, State Board of Education Agenda, so we'd want to communicate it as soon as it's known to the district. So with later approval, the waivers would be submitted to CDE for approval by the State Board of Education, and as I said, they will be taking this up hopefully as we submit in May. I will just say that we put corrected copies of Bowling Green 2526, just at the very bottom said number of workdays, it's school days that we're talking about. We would need to negotiate actually, in addition to what we have already done, we know this affects the entire district. And so we will need to have, once approved, conversations and negotiations with our other labor partners to ensure that any working condition items were addressed. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Consey. Do we have any public comments on this?
We do, we have one speaker signed up, Franchelle Brown.
Evening, Ms. Brown. Floor is yours.
Good evening. As a parent of two high school students at John F. Kennedy, I had a conversation with my children in regards to the additional eight days for the school years, and as they're adults, I'm here speaking on their behalf. Now, my two that's going to be remaining at John F. Kennedy come next year, they're not happy about the eight days. They're like, why can't you, instead of giving us eight more days, why can't you just give us the additional hour on Thursdays instead of adding eight more days? Could you possibly look at that as an option versus giving them eight more days of school? Because those two particular children don't like to go to school as it is. I have a struggle with keeping them at the school because something's always going wrong with one of them. So as their parent, I would like for you all to at least look at that option as to, instead of them getting out at 2:30 on Thursdays, that they stay there an additional hour to 3:30 on Thursdays to possibly make up for those eight days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, sir?
No, ma'am.
Any of my colleagues have any statements, questions? Ms. Villa?
I know this is an incredible feat to get this all done. I mean, I know you guys have been working tirelessly to provide all the documentations and work with all of our site staff, so I appreciate you. I'm speaking with constituents and different folks in the community. We know that giving May 15th as an answer to our community on a start date is late. You've said that, and I just want to publicly state that. A lot of people are very concerned, you know, they have to figure out something to do with their children, and we need to have those answers. Again, I know this is out of our hands, and this is the earliest we can do it, but I just want to publicly say that this is a really, this is a challenge for not only our educators, but for our families and communities to try to make sure that they have something, you know, that they have a plan figured out for their child. So I appreciate you and the team and everything that you're doing, and hopefully we can just get this process moving forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. Mr. Kiata?
Dr. McCarron, I was wondering if you could answer the question from the public comment, why can't we just add minutes to the days that we have?
Yes, thank you. We looked at a number of options, including that, including looking at days we normally have off during this, the calendar year to maybe add, and those were not things that were allowable. So we were working within what we had guidelines to do. We specifically asked, could we break this up four days, four days? Could we look at adding hours after a day? Could we look at having one day off in February instead of two? We explored a number of those options, and this was the best we could come up with, given the limitations.
And are those, sorry?
I'm so, I'm so sorry. The only other thing I would add to that specifically is, we really wanted this to be instructional time for kids, right? We really wanted to have teachers and, and site communities leaders to have an opportunity to really give instruction to kids. Again, we recognize these are not the same students that lost instructional time, but we also recognize it's an opportunity to give our current students more instructional time, more time with their class, more time with their teachers, more time being supported at their school site communities. And so adding them together, given the limitations, again, we explored other options allowed that, allowed us to try to put together a structure that would provide meaningful instructional minutes for kids, instructional days.
The limitations you mentioned, can you, I don't know if you can describe those a little more, like, is this part of state laws? Is this something local here in our district, like?
No, part of, part of the direction that we got from the State Board of Education, like, there are limitations. As I said, we explored a number of those different options, splitting them up, adding minutes to a day, and, and this is what we came up with, with the structure that best meets our needs.
Okay. I mean, we've seen this coming since the strike. I found this provision of ed code to be really not ideal for local communities trying to recover from a strike, in this case, you know, a strike that the community broadly supported, and now, you know, families might feel like, first of all, why is it so delayed? And second of all, you know, even speaking to the comment we just had, you know, why are my kids kind of being punished for, with more school? You know, the fact that if we didn't seek this waiver, the money would have gone back to the state instead of being able to be spent locally, that's concerned me, because it's almost like we're being penalized as a community for actions that are out of the hands of, you know, 99.9% of people who have kids in this district. You know, I don't know if we could be like a case study to the state, but I know we're trying to navigate under a very tight timeline, and this is really kind of where the state law allows us to be, but this is going to be a burden on our families, and, you know, I really wish that the law was better in this area, that there was other things for us to do other than intense negotiations, intense planning. You know, you've mentioned to the board, you know, you're working tirelessly behind the scenes to try to get this on the calendar, and, you know, I guess I'm just kind of apologizing to the community, but I'm also kind of asking the state board, asking, you know, legislators to kind of take a look at this and see how our experience has been, and if there's ways that we can support the kids earlier if a district is unable to make up those days during the school year, because that's ultimately what led us here. So not, not a comment to you, but I, I do very much appreciate the work you all are doing, and I do understand, you know, I hope we get the waiver, of course, because we want to get those funds back, but I do understand the hardship this will be on the community, and ultimately, I'm really hoping that we get this message out in a very public way, you know, in places that people actually find out about these things, and that families understand that, you know, there's a real benefit to this and that they do show up. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and we're thankful to the State Board of Education for working with us, because this isn't an every-year event that they see, and so I do just want to put out there that, given it's a little bit new to both sides, that they really have been working with us to try to, even though it might not feel, move quickly, given it will be May, to move quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
All right. Thank you, Consey. I think a couple of comments. First of all, I agree, of course, you know, we can always look at our state legislators to say, hey, look at what's happening, try to make some changes, but I also think it's important to address the community that although this is a tough pill to swallow, it's really important to note that we were talking about putting $47 million back into education, back into instructional time, and I understand that this affects communities' ability to make plans and do other things, and I'm not, I don't want to be oblivious to that. And at the same time, this strike had many ramifications. I was not on this board when that strike happened, right? But we saw as a community the type of effects it was having on fracturing folks and also folks scrambling to figure out what to do, while also very much supporting the idea of making sure that our students get the type of instruction that they seek. But this is part of that, right? This is adding back time that was never there in the first place. These are, we're not adding additional days, we're adding days to make up for the days that didn't occur, right? So I think I want to be able to acknowledge that it's tough, and at the same time, we do need to add these days back. And on top of that, I think we have to remember that we, as a district, are constantly trying to figure out how to improve outcomes for our students. When folks talk about seeing low success rates, or low graduation rates, or low literacy rates, and whatever other concerns that we have that not only we struggle with, but our entire state and other school districts struggle with, the best way to fix that is to ensure that you're getting quality education, and we are trying to catch up during a time of extreme learning loss with COVID and everything else. I can't think of a better way than to actually get our kids back into the classroom. I would hope to think that our kids don't, I can't speak for children, but I know kids are going to say, oh my God, why am I getting extra days in school? But it's not a bad thing, obviously, it's a good thing. So I know this is tough, but I also want to make it very clear that we understand, or at least I understand, that there are folks who may very much benefit from additional days, kids who are back in the classroom, families who are able to put their children in school so that they can actually continue to balance that work-life balance, and there are others who, who may have had plans, and those plans may be thwarted because of this. I also want to make it clear, this is one vote. We, it does not end here. If we actually vote on this and it goes through, we still have to wait for the State Board of Education to actually approve this. So this is us trying to push forward a process. The process doesn't end with us, the process actually ends with the Board of Education at the state level. So I just want folks to understand that it's not a, what we do here tonight is the final call, it's actually on the state to make that decision, and we're just trying to push the process forward. So thank you.
Thank you for highlighting it, because what you're approving is for us to apply.
Okay. Ms. Jean?
So I've been sitting here trying to think, like, what is it I want to say? This has been such a journey, and, and it's a journey that started before I was seated on the board as well, right? And there's, there's the feeling of how do we move forward together when we still have things from our past that are drastically impacting what we can do in moving forward, right? And it's, I've been hearing a lot about the $47 million, but to me, it's more about the students, you know, their, their education, the eight days, the strike coming off of the COVID, and I know how disruptive and challenging that was. I also fully recognize the, the changes that needed to be made and the folks that felt like there wasn't another way to get those changes made, and that's, strikes, teachers never want to go on strike, educators never want to go on strike, it's what they do when they feel like they have to. And it's painful, and it's hard to come back from. And we are sitting here as a board now, still trying to come back from that because we didn't take care of it in the year the strike happened. And remember, Kiata, I'm hearing you talk about, you know, why does the state do it this way? I think it's pretty good incentive to clean up your stuff in the school year it happened, because that's what the kids deserve. And it's easy for perhaps us as a board to point at all the ways in which this isn't in our hands, and that's true. There's a lot of moving parts that we do not have control over. But I think we, as the seven, six of us on the dais at the moment who've been elected to represent the community, we need to take stock too of the decisions we are making and the ways we are communicating with each other, and the ways we are coming to decisions to ensure that we clean this up and, and continue to pave a better path moving forward. I don't know entirely what that looks like, but I'm excited to do it with each and every one of you. I did have one thought of, I know that there are some common questions coming through, and I was just thinking communications-wise, do we have an FAQ that we could point, like, why do we have to do two years in a row? Well, ed code, right? Like, why, why is the decision until May 15th? Well, it's called State Board of Education. Why did it take the district so long to get here? Well, we were waiting on stuff back in October, and then we were still waiting in January, but we actually decided, let's just start bargaining and let's just start figuring it out while we're waiting, because we're tired of waiting, right? There's so many things, and, and I don't know how much of it all needs to be shared, but for the people that are asking, I'd love, I don't know if we're getting common questions and if an FAQ would be helpful. I, I don't know. So, that would be, Brian's nodding, so I'm going to say awesome. And that would definitely help us as board members too, as we go into the community and hear the concerns and, and be able to have a clear message and encourage people to advocate to the State Board of Education, saying, we want our kids to get their education, we want to move forward, and please approve this so that we can make this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. So I have a tendency to want to say things in plain English to make sure they understand. So, yes, we had a strike. That strike took eight days of learning away from our students. But we're being penalized for those eight days not being taken care of at some point where we could have taken care of them at eight instead of 16. So, but our job is, the State Board of Education says, we're going to give you a lot of hoops and a lot of things to jump through, and you're going to have to find 15 million other people to try and make you make this work so we can send it to them so that maybe they can tell us yes. So, my understanding is that if we, if, if this is accepted by the State Board of Education, then we have the opportunity to provide those eight days of instructional minutes and days, I guess they run together in a way, and, and additional eight. So, a whole 16, granted, not taking place when we'd like it to, but here we are. But if the State Board of Education says, no, we're not going to allow this, the only folks who really lose are our students, and we would not be able, we, we literally will just be handing over money for something that we didn't provide. And so the goal here is for us to get this information to them as timely, because I don't think there's a timeline, I don't think there's a specific date, because this is so very odd. But I, I do understand when parents say, man, I'm just trying to get these kids to stay at school, just trying to get them to stay in, and then we're going to give them an additional eight. Is there any, any alternative for maybe, I mean, are we losing? And I'm trying to, trying to figure out, if we have just two students who say, I'm not going to go do that eight and eight, I got three more years of, of school here in Sac City, but in those two years, I'm not going to do those eight days, does that put us in any kind of predicament with getting this waiver approved?
Thank you for the question. So, one, our timeline to submit for the application is tomorrow. So, we're going to be submitting, should you approve, we will be submitting tomorrow. That is already the State Board being really flexible with us to try to get to May, because normally this stuff happens before.
Right.
But we know the agreement was approved by the board last meeting, this meeting, seeking approval for the waiver, tomorrow we submit. If, if students decide, you know, for, for whatever reason, if students aren't able to attend, it would be just like any other day where the district generates ADA for student attendance. So part of the reason also for, you know, putting them together, it's, 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 you're, you're starting, you're starting the year, you're starting with your group, you're meeting your teacher or teachers, you are, you know, building community, you are all of those things at the beginning of the year. So, recognize it's difficult, we recognize it's additionally difficult, because we won't know until the beginning of May, and the whole system will need to shift pretty quickly. And there are lots of components to that, not just the engaging on working conditions with all of our other labor partners, of course, that's part of it, but we have a whole system going that is going to need some, some time and attention and tweaking, should that be approved. So, I guess to say the timeline is tomorrow, students not attending affects us like any other day, a student wouldn't attend school, and we know it's a lot, and we know it's late, and we're where we are, and we're trying to do our best to, to, to get through so that in the end, like you said, students have an opportunity for additional instructional days rather than us paying a bill.
Okay. That makes sense to me. So, can, can, can we ask this question? Filing is tomorrow. You're ready to file this tomorrow?
We are ready.
Okay.
A team.
Yes.
It's all of this, huge team, but yes.
Okay. All right. So far, so good. I appreciate the work y'all have done. So we are, we already had public, no, we might have more public comments? Or we're, we're done, because Consey came back up, so, okay. Dear colleagues, we asked our questions. We are now satisfied that folks have said that they've done what they need to do, so we just need to put this to a vote.
So moved.
Actually, this is informational.
Wait, wait, wait. It's informational.
This is informational, because we wanted you to have context to all of those various items that you see on consent. This is what all of those mean.
It says right there, information. I just got really excited, so, okay. So for clarity, this is something that's going to be on our consent, our consent items, and it's going to be 13.1 R through V. And when we vote on consent agenda, it's not things that we list out for you, but they're always inside the notes that we provide for our public, if y'all want to have a look at that, so.
And President Phillips, you see that differently, because there are calendars for each year for the district and the four charters, and then you see the waiver request for the district and the four charters. That's why there are so many items.
Okay. Learn as you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got it. Moving on, we have already completed item 10.1. Item 11.1, surplus property options and overview of process. Mr. Browning, floor is yours.
Good evening, President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, board members. I'm Nathaniel Browning, and I'm here with Kelly Rem from LaZona Smith. She provides her legal expertise to the district in this area. We're here this evening to outline options and overview of the surplus property process and to ask for the board's approval to convene a community advisory committee, also known as a 7-11 committee, to start the surplus property process. Here's the core values and guiding principles that guide our every move in facilities. Here's the acronyms that you'll see throughout the presentation this evening. So this presentation will provide a historical context relating to this topic, provide legal insight on the surplus property process, share a proposed timeline for creating and convening a 7-11 committee, and outline legal steps if the board were to decide to sell property in the future. We will be going through a lot this evening in this presentation, but ultimately, the staff will recommend that the board approves the creation of a 7-11 committee to review and potentially recommend surplusing five sites that are not currently used for district So to ground us in the history, in 2013, a district closed seven elementary school sites in total. Two of those sites have since reopened as district schools, two reopened as community centers run by nonprofits, and one of them opened as a charter school. One of them also remains closed and has since been used as a storage facility for the district. Additionally, the district owns two other properties we consider underutilized. The first is what we call Perry Avenue Field, which is adjacent to, but to the south of Fruit Ridge Elementary. It is a separate piece of property from the Fruit Ridge site. The other underutilized facility is the old Florin Tech Building located on the corner of 24th and Florin. It was once a car dealership, then a facility for a career technical education program, then an adult education program, and finally, storage for the district. So, quick background, in 2014, the district formed a 7-11 committee to help form a recommendation on how to address the excess property identified by school closures in the year previous. And their recommendation was to lease the properties in case those sites were ever to be opened back up as schools in the future. And the board eventually accepted proposals for Fruit Ridge and Maple Sites to operate as community nonprofit hubs. A decade has passed since that time, and staff believe now is a good time to reevaluate the continued need of these properties and to evaluate the continued need of the other two underutilized properties. It is recommended that a new 7-11 committee is formed to review and recommend possible next steps of those five sites. A new committee is recommended because of the legal changes that have taken place since then and because of the amount of time that has elapsed since the original 7-11 committee in 2014. Staff believe it's just proper due diligence to create that new committee. So today, staff is recommending again the creation of a new 7-11 committee. It's important to note that the district has worked closely with tenants leasing the Maple and Fruit Ridge sites since 2015. There is interest by those tenants and others within the community for the district to entertain the idea of possibly selling those properties to appropriate entities at this time. As we will share later in the presentation, we cannot simply sell those properties to the current tenants without going through a list of other potential entities first, which Kelly will share in greater detail in the coming slides. And with that, I'll transition over to Kelly.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to give a very high-level overview of the process and legal requirements that apply to what we call the surplus property provisions of the Education Code and Government Code. When we say surplus property provisions, what we're really talking about is procedures that school districts have to go through before they can consider a sale or lease of property. And one of those requirements is convening the 7-11 committee, so that's going to be a focus of our presentation. Before I dive into the specific legal requirements, just a quick note on some considerations and planning that districts tend to undertake before they, as they start up this process, and some of these will dovetail with the 7-11 committee's work. So some examples are considering whether there are future foreseeable uses of property by the district, as well as alternative uses by the district or third parties to the extent acceptable. Also, physical constraints of properties and political aspects. These are just some things to start thinking of as this process sort of kicks off. Okay, so first, just to kind of frame the discussion, I want everyone to be aware that there are two separate sources of legal authority that apply to school district sale or lease of property. The first is the California Education Code, and that's going to be the bulk of the requirements that we're going to talk about tonight and the bulk of the requirements that you will navigate as you go through this process, assuming that you do go through this process. But be aware also that there is the Surplus Land Act in the Government Code, which is applicable not to just school districts, but to all local agencies, and it has additional requirements. However, the good news is that most school district property is exempt or can be exempt from the Surplus Land Act, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But it is something that still needs to be considered, and it is one more box on the list that needs to be checked in the process. Okay, so jumping into the Education Code requirements, we're going to start with talking about the legislative direction on community input. And this is really the heart of why we're here tonight. The, the ask is to convene a new 7-11 committee, and this is where this requirement comes from. So the Education Code actually requires school districts to consider community input prior to making decisions on use of, user disposition of surplus property. Why do we call it a 7-11 committee? So anyone who's new to this, it's because the statute expressly requires the committee to be made up of between seven and 11 members. So that's how it got its shorthand nickname, but it is just an advisory committee to the district, to the board, made up of citizens. As I said, this is a requirement before school districts can consider lease or sale of property, with certain exceptions, but it's going to apply in most cases. And one thing that's really important to remember is that the committee recommendations that they'll ultimately make at the end of the process to the board are advisory only. They're not binding on you, they're recommendations for your consideration. One thing you might also be wondering is, why do we have to repeat this process if it was already done for some or all of these properties back in 2014? So I think the question is, are those recommendations from a decade ago still relevant? And the law is a little ambiguous on that, but I think from a practical standpoint, as Nathaniel said, a lot of things change over a decade, both within the community and within the district. And so we think it's prudent to repeat that process with a fresh set of eyes from the As far as the specific requirements of the committee, there are seven separate membership categories that have to be met, and I will get to those on the next slide. But generally speaking, it's an independent, objective body that's created by the board, appointed by the board, and they will hold public meetings to gather public input. In that sense, it's important to note that the, the committee is a Brown Act body because of the way they're formed, and so they would be, they would be subject to all of the same open meeting requirements, agendized meetings, not discussing business outside of those meetings, et cetera, that the board is well familiar with. As I mentioned, there are seven separate membership criteria that have to be met on the, on this committee. They're listed there with the ed code citation. Examples include parents, teachers, administrators, and people with land use expertise, things like that. So those would be the types of people that would be solicited for membership on the committee. And with that, I will turn it back over to Nathaniel.
Thank you. So to form a committee, staff will undergo a process to recruit potential 7-11 committee members, review applications received, and bring those recommendations to the board for approval. The committee will appoint their own leadership and will be staffed by the facilities department. And the board will be kept informed throughout that process. So we have outlined a timeline for that process, starting with the board, hopeful board approval tonight. Then moving through, animation, staff will bring those committee recommendations to the board for their approval in June. We anticipate meetings would start in August, and the plan that the committee would bring back to present to the board would be done in October. So there are a number of requirements the board should be aware of regarding the surplus process. But first, I wanted to share with you a little bit about the why behind the staff recommendation. Vacant schools and empty buildings are a continued liability to the district, and they drain resources away from serving our students, which is our primary focus and goal. For instance, annual insurance cost for an elementary school site is about $20,000 a year. Empty buildings often also attract unwanted attention that may disproportionately poll security services and add ongoing maintenance costs to those sites. For example, CP Huntington Elementary, which doesn't have any programming at the time for the district, does not currently, we've spent $56,000 this academic school year, and the school year is not even over. So adding that $56,000 to the $20,000 insurance amount, that's about $75,000 annually, and our fiscal year is not even done. So if you want to multiply that by 10 years, you know, not accounting for inflation, that's 3/4 of a million dollars just on one property. Now, so I'd like to hand it back over to Kelly.
And I'm just going to close this out with the remainder of the legal process for, for selling or leasing property, and that's really just to kind of contextualize how the committee's work fits into the overall process. And so the first thing is formal board declarations. And I mentioned earlier the Surplus Land Act and the possibility that land can be exempt from the Surplus Land Act. That does require a board resolution declaring property as exempt surplus land and providing a copy of that resolution to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their approval. And if that is approved, at that point, the school district for that property would be exempt from the remainder of the Surplus Land Act and can just focus on the ed code requirements. Can we sell to a current tenant? So Nathaniel already kind of answered this question, and hopefully you see the reasons why the answer is generally no to this question. There's a process that has to happen, as well as some noticing that I'm going to talk about on the next few slides. So the next step in the process, to me, I refer to as the statutory noticing. There are a whole bunch of different requirements that come from different parts of the ed code and require prior to, prior to sale or lease of property that notice be provided to certain agencies and entities. There's a whole bunch, there's a whole list, and we won't go through them in detail, but the first kind of area to consider is the Naylor Act. the first kind of area to consider is the Naylor Act and whether or not the Naylor Act applies. The Naylor Act applies to property that has playgrounds, playfields, and open space and has been used that way for at least eight years. In that case, if the act applies, the property is offered to the city, county, park districts, and regional park authorities, and if they are interested, there is a limitation on what can be charged in terms of a sale or lease price. Moving on from the Naylor Act, if we're talking about a potential sale or lease with option to purchase, there is a whole list of different entities and agencies that are entitled to notice, either through an actual mailed notice or through a newspaper publication. I won't go through the whole list, but that is another step in the process. If we're talking about a lease with no option to purchase, then the noticing is a little bit less extensive. There are no notices beyond the Naylor Act, but there is a requirement to offer vacant classrooms to, for special education use if applicable. Okay. And then additional steps. So once you get through the 7-11 committee process and the noticing process, the, the whole big picture kind of culminates in the 7-11 committee presenting its recommendations to the board for consideration. The board would then adopt a resolution by two-thirds vote, declaring an intent to sell or lease property. And that resolution is really what kicks off the competitive bidding process, where the property would be put out for sale or lease by competitive bid. Bids would be accepted, and the requirement is that the board would sell or lease to the highest bid or reject all bids, and that would happen at a subsequent meeting. So that is kind of the ed code requirements in a nutshell. The one last thing I wanted to mention is that the ed code also does provide for waiver authority for the competitive bidding requirements, which some districts do seek, so that is also an option. In doing that, there is a process both in seeking the waiver as well as the, what comes subsequent to that, that the process is still transparent and competitive, but it does allow a little bit more flexibility in the process, which might allow consideration of factors other than price, including community input and needs, and that kind of brings us full circle back to the recommendation here.
And so here we are, tonight, we stand before you with a recommendation to convene a 7-11 committee to review and make recommendations for these five sites. We are 20 seconds over.
Thanks. Did we have any public comments on this?
We do not.
Okay. Mr. Kayata?
So just a logistical question, I think, for council. Am I allowed to speak at this point about where I would like to see these properties go, or would that prejudice the committee?
I think that's probably beyond the specific ask tonight, and the, all of the steps that I just went through are certainly things that are going to come back to the board in the future for consideration, and so there will be lots of opportunity to discuss all of those options. But yeah, I think it would be good to take the step of convening the committee and seeing what their recommendations are, and then having that discussion. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, I'm just asking because what I think these properties could do is relevant to why I would like to support this, so I just, I don't want to do anything that interferes with the process.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's inappropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can share that for context.
Okay, so yeah, I'm glad that this is here. I thank staff for bringing this to us. I've expressed this with my colleagues before, shortly after being elected here, but generally, I think if the school district is not using these properties, it makes sense to try to find someone who can own the properties and make the best use of them that serve our community. You know, our core competency here, what we do is, we run a school district. I think to the extent that we can support sites that we might use again in the future, that's one thing, and I believe that was kind of what the 7-11 committee 10 years ago decided. But kind of managing properties, managing tenants, I feel like just kind of is a distraction for staff away from focusing on the needs of our students. So generally, I do very much support this. In terms of selling to tenants, so there was kind of a couple of things here that I just want to clarify to make sure, because for La Familia in particular, I mean, they're an amazing tenant, and if they want to buy it, I want to sell it. So if we go through the process and they could buy it, right, they're not precluded from buying just because they're a current tenant. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm seeing a yes.
Yes, that is correct.
And then with respect to the waiver, I know you didn't really get into it, but let's say they were interested, but you know, they were offering us less than someone who wanted to come in and put in luxury apartments, right? Could we opt to allow that?
Yes, that, generally speaking, that is the benefit of the waiver, is that it does allow consideration of factors other than price. So one thing may be it's a community-serving need, and that's a reason why we want to consider them. There would be more discretion for the board.
Okay. And the only other question I had is, so I know CB Wire is not on the list because we're currently using it. We've been making improvements to CB Wire to have it operate as a school, so we're not sending our kids who are there temporarily to a substandard facility, but after we do that, and maybe this is not something you all prep for, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask in advance this time, it just kind of occurred to me, but we're getting the right person here.
I'll be the person.
So I mean, I guess we're essentially equipping this as either a school or something that would operate similar to a school, maybe educational supports. Is there a reason that we wouldn't put it in this today if we're not planning on having it be an elementary school after the kids move back to their site? That we wouldn't, you know, because this thing might be in effect for the next 10 years, just to have it as a backup plan for ourselves?
Yeah, well, I think considering that we've come back to ask to do another 7-11 after 10 years, we have plans for CB Wire as interim housing for at least eight, if not 10, depending on how our bond programs go in the future. So I think it would be then, at that mark, when we know we're no longer in need of it, you don't know what enrollment does in 10 years, so we may need it, so I think it would be wise to, to let us use it how we're using it as interim housing for our projects. 10 years elapsed, we'd come back and ask the same question.
Okay, and that is exactly what I was looking for, is we have plans for the next, you know, eight years, which you just said, so, okay, then that makes sense to me. I have nothing further. I'm very much in support of this, and I think it's really good to see if we can, you know, best serve the Sacramento community by freeing up some of our properties for people who can use it for uses that we support, but that will not be an administrative burden on the district, so, thank you.
What's in my head is just wanting to be really clear on the why, like, why now? Why at this, this time? And so I'm, I'm kind of seeing two in the presentation. One is that question on Slide 13, are the recommendations from 2014 still relevant? So that's the first why. And then you mentioned, I think, a second why in talking about the current resources being invested in these, and I wanted to kind of ask, you mentioned the financial resources, this is on Slide 20, when you said $75,000 annually per property, and we're looking at five or seven properties?
Five.
Five properties. Are there other resources in addition to the finances in the, I'm assuming staff resources? Are there other whys we need to keep in mind as to why we would want to vote for this?
Well, the why is, is because the 7-11 question helps us go through the why. The why will be answered by going through the process. It allows us to investigate, are we properly using it? Is it worth continuing to hold on to? Are the resources that we're investing into it on an annual basis worth the continued ownership? We're not asking you today to sell the property, we're asking you today to allow us to go investigate the why. And I think the numbers Nathaniel brought is CP Huntington, but it did take three staff members to find just that answer, and we deal with leases on a daily basis in the Planning Department, Nathaniel's group. It is a constant effort for us, and, and at times, it distracts us from being able to answer a work order at JFK or Lea Todd and Floyd sometimes.
Thank you, that was what I was looking for. So ultimately, this is not saying we are making a decision, this is saying we need more information.
This allows, oh, sorry.
No, and then there's a very, I really appreciate the process and the outlining and the deadlines and the due dates. It makes me feel very confident that we can put a good committee together that can do this well, so that we can make the right decision.
And at the end of the day, the board can decide to do nothing.
I did notice that. I thought that was very fascinating. So to me, it feels like we need to make sure we put a really good committee together that we can believe in and invest in, otherwise, that's a waste of a lot of people's time. So, thank you.
I just want to say, this is exciting to put the 7-11 committee together. Hopefully, the board supports, and I'm excited for, I guess, different reasons. I'm really interested, I guess, counter to my colleague, Member Kayata, I'm excited to see if the committee views that properties that we can use for housing, teacher housing, things like that, as an option rather than selling. So we're, I guess the board is excited for multiple reasons for, and on different sides of it, but hopefully the board passes it today and we can move forward.
I just want to second that excitement. I'm excited in general, but I like that idea too.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, if you look at my notes here, low-income housing, supportive housing is something that I would like, and I just didn't mention that, so I think we're actually in agreement that this would be great opportunities, so I just want to see what the committee will recommend.
Oh, I don't, I didn't say anything. I'm not trying to go back and forth, bro, no. I'm not trying to go back and forth.
Okay, so a couple of questions that I'm kind of thinking of right now, because I'm going to say something. So there's five schools. Plain English, you want to form a 7-11 committee so that we can revisit perhaps a list that was created back in 2014, which may not be relevant anymore.
We are seeking a committee that will go through the process of providing this board ideas on the use of the property. Is it still appropriate the way we're using it? Do they have other recommendations? There are experts on this committee that they will be listening, or the board committee will listen to experts on property management, property uses, ideas, there will be a whole slew of, of meetings and conversations that happen, that then come back to you for consideration, and, and that is, I don't want to confuse it with the 2014 list of closing schools because this is not what that process is. These properties are not used for educational purposes already.
If I may also, so the recommendation, like Kelly said, is to create the 7-11 committee. The committee can make a recommendation then at some point to the board, it's non-binding, and so the board really has the authority after they hear out the committee process. If the board decides to go through the surplus process and declare it surplus, we could still own it, we could still own it forever, we could, it just gives us a little bit more leeway to lease it in a little bit different manner, we could eventually sell it, we could just continue to use it as storage if that's what it is.
Okay, and so I'm going to forget that there was ever a list in 2014 because that was for closing schools, and that's not important right now. Question though, is when we, when we form this committee and they start working, we're going to have a lot of experts, will we also have an equity expert, someone who's making sure they're using the Equity Index to like locate what parts these areas are in that are adversely affected already? So, do you see what I'm saying?
We'll take that note, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm just curious from, from council if there's, have there, have there been any issues with the federal, I can't remember what it was called, the federal land? Yeah, so I mean, have there been problems with that being used? Because it sounds like if, if it's declared under that, then we're going to be offering that to someone, and I know that the highest bidder is not necessarily the most important, but that's being handled, if, if it falls under that, then we're looking at large entities like government agencies who might want to take up that property, but then we're going to possibly find exemptions for those so that maybe we're not using that to list them for large government agencies.
So I, I'm hearing two potential things here. One is, are you, you mean the exemption from the Surplus Land Act where, or are you talking about the waiver from the state that would allow flexibility in the, in the process, in the bidding process?
The surplus. So, I mean, and like I said, it's, it's a lot of words, but my understanding is that if we find that those properties are available, then at some point, we could say, yes, maybe we've declared them surplus, and we're going to offer them to someone. And the reason I'm saying this and why I'm screaming the whole Equity Index thing and why we really should be looking at that, is frequently in areas that are adversely affected, people come in purchasing things to help, and it does not help the way that the community needs the help. So, I mean, I'm hoping that our, our 7-11 committee really thinks about the importance of who might purchase this, and I know as a board, like, if somebody said, I'll give you $3 billion for, for a CB, we'd be like, no, because you're going to put something that is not going to be helpful to that community. And we, we kind of have the opportunity to, to go along with or approve whatever the 7-11 committee comes up with. So that, that kind of makes sense to me. I'm just making sure that I don't have any other questions.
I think the best answer to your question is, real estate lies solely with the direction of the board. It is not offered to staff to do something by any other means other than your vote. We are only bringing ideas to you. A negotiation would happen, your direction would be continuously asked after the 7-11 committee. So the 7-11 committee has the process of gathering the facts and information, they can come with recommendations, ultimately through your direction as a board, through real estate transactions, which is a closed session item. Those items would be at your discretion in deciding, yes, no, there's a process and order that we'd have to maybe have some of those negotiations, and at the end of the day, if the board decides this is not the right decision on the district's behalf, it is your decision to make.
Okay.
It is not, the, the committee is not making a decision, they're just gathering facts on your behalf and then providing some ideas for you.
Thank you.
And lastly, the, there'll be more conversations about process and order after we're getting ready to come forward with a recommendation from the 7-11 committee, so there's going to be a lot more conversations to be had around all this.
Okay, and I will cease my questions. Sometimes you just want to hear it on like a very basic understanding, and because school closures have affected us in the past, I just want to make sure that, you know, the folks who sit on this committee, whoever's chosen, really have the community's best interest in mind. So I appreciate that. This was informational? Nope. Look, I just want to, we got that down there, moved and seconded. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one of our community folks who's going to come up and taking care of business, came in a little late, so this is BAAA-B, or LCAP. Mr. Gladney? LCAP, please.
So, my apologies, yeah, I was at the middle school track, it was our first one of the, of the season, so, and you guys were early, so congratulations on that. So, wait, can you, can you stop the clock? Just start. Do I get three minutes for?
Does this button allow me to restart the clock?
All right, so, so I, I committed to presenting both the LCAP PAC and the BAAA-B. I can get both those done in three minutes? Is that cool? Was that for that, or were you guys going to give me three, three for each?
Yeah, just get, put six up there. You'll be finished, you're, you're usually pretty expedient, so.
Okay, and then I had a public comment, so I'll wrap that into six minutes.
Okay, Mr. Gladney.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask until you say no. All right, so, let's see, LCAP PAC, is that first? LCAP PAC, we, on, I think this Monday, we discussed the Equity Multiplier Schools, and Equity Multiplier is a new funding mechanism that basically focuses on schools that have not only high levels of red areas on the dashboard, but also a high level of mobility as defined by the state, and, let me see if I can pull up the list. But they basically get pots of money that are specific to the local school site, and they're supposed to come up with a plan that is supposed to be implemented at the local level and also reflected in the LCAP. So we were discussing as a body how best to support those school sites and how we might be able to leverage this unique opportunity to hopefully establish better processes at the school site, because we know that all of our SIPs at the school sites are not always done with fidelity, whether because of capacity or some other reason or mechanism. So we're looking at as an opportunity to hopefully represent you all, whatever trustee area we come from, to inform and support the school sites through the process so that hopefully this, this money and this investment goes towards impactful outcomes for the scholars. To that point, we are still short members, and even with the current membership that we have on record, we often only have a few members in the space, and that is not a good reflection of why we exist or the intent of the LCAP PAC or the intent that is not a good reflection of why we exist, or the intent of the LCAP PAC, or the intent of LCFF. So we would ask that you all reach out to your members that represent you on the LCAP PAC, and see if they need any sort of support in attending and representing you all in the space and the community as a whole in the space. And also, if you guys have vacancies, you know, if you guys will be partners with us in filling those gaps. From the B AAAB side, we welcomed seven new members, and we were actually in the Pennsylvania room, so kind of like in the middle of the space on Tuesday night. And we specifically chose CERN, because obviously it is the core of our district in terms of where decisions are made, like tonight. But also because of this meeting, right? This is where decisions are made. So we want to introduce our members into the space, because the B AAAB exists, because of the board-approved recommendations from 2019. And it's very important and it's critical that we recognize that, just like you guys were discussing with the 7-11 committee, decisions that were made in the past should not encompass in the present. We need to continue to be mindful and stewards of the decisions we make and make sure that they're relevant and current. So with that, we are onboarding our members at a very high rate to make sure that as we move forward, we don't leave them behind, and we move in partnership and community. And our nominating committee, Nikisha Thomas, who's our secretary, Malachi Smith, who is our parliamentarian, and Frenchelle Brown, who is also on the nominating committee, did a masterful job of really assessing not only the recommendations as they were written, but also the gaps in capacity we have as a body. And the credentials of our new members are extremely powerful. They jump off the page, and they speak directly to the recommendations, and they will be very, very monumental and instrumental in allowing us to get the recommendations fully implemented, you know, as they were intended to be with relevance to today. From a personal standpoint, and I hope I'm not stealing any of you guys' thunder, you guys know that, you know, my organization, Terrell Christmas Gladney Memorial Academy, we're a small nonprofit that provides supplemental services to the district in the before and after-school space. And, you know, this past Saturday, with board members Singh and Kayata present, we successfully restored the regional competition for the Scripps National Spelling Bee. It's a space that was occupied before by giants such as SAC Bee and Sacramento Public Libraries. But I saw a vacancy and a need and a holding need to be filled, and I didn't understand why giant corporations like that couldn't fill the space. But I know that, you know, through my ancestry, whether current, you know, recent history or, you know, ancient history, I stand on the shoulders of giants, so I'm not afraid to fill the space of giants. And because of people like Board Member Kayata and Board Member Singh and people from my village and my network, we were able to fill that space. And I want to uplift the story of the young woman or the young lady who won. Her name is Nikita Rangan, and she's a student at Brookfield School. She went to Scripps National Bee as a third grader through a special program that they have for runners-up to allow them to go participate in national. She went a couple of years as a runner-up, and then COVID hit, and then they went to this online space where they're competing against people from four states. She's an eighth grader now, really at the limit of when she could last compete, and she won. She's going to represent not only us in this room, but also throughout the greater region. And I want to speak to her family because they were so grateful not only to have the opportunity to hopefully, you know, go and achieve what she had achieved before, and she maintains is her goal. But when we were cleaning up the space at Kennedy and the theater, they were the last ones there with my mom and my daughter, and they helped clean the space, and they volunteered to take the leftover lunches that were provided from the culinary department. And they went and they donated them to the homeless on our behalf. And that's really what our organization is about. We also operate as a facilitator of the Middle School Track and Field League. And for years, a lot of the coaches in the space have talked about a fear of implementing implements such as hurdles and high jump because of the risks associated and the extra coaching and investment that was needed. But today, we held our first-ever hurdle race in SAC City Unified, and we also held our first high jump competition. And what that means to us in this room in terms of education is that if we set the bar high for our youth, they will reach it. So we can't, as adults, be fearful of failure. We have to set high expectations for all of our students, and they'll reach it as they did today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. It's always a pleasure to hear Mr. Gladney speak. He put three different hats on tonight. Appreciate that. Okay, so here I'm looking at item 12. Not yet. Communications. I'm going to always read these backwards, kind of, because I just want to call on the student member report before the president's report. Anything to report out, ma'am?
No.
Okay, it's okay. Students are our focus here. And president's report, 12.1, she has nothing to say. Just really excited to be in the room with y'all tonight. So I want to hear from my colleagues. 12.3, information sharing by board members. Just verifying the time right now. We're doing really well. I'm sure I'm asking if there's any public comment, because I don't, yeah.
We don't have any.
Okay. I see one. I almost want to wait for three or four of you guys to share, because so many other great things have happened, right? Mr. Kayata, go ahead.
All right. First of all, I just want to kind of celebrate what an amazing time we had as you with the community fair just about two weeks ago now. Great seeing President Phillips there, Member Rhodes, Superintendent Mary was there. It was an amazing time. We had a bunch of people come out. I think the biggest thing I want to uplift is that, you know, the previous board had started these fairs, you know, with the Wadup and Walls, and that we're continuing this, and it wasn't just about the murals, that it's about community, and that we're able to keep it going. It's just really exciting. My kids have always loved these fairs. I know other kids there are super excited. You know, you get information, you get to talk to people, you know, you get some good food from the central kitchen, and you basically just get out there and you're in space with your community, and it's a wonderful thing, and I'm glad that we're able to keep doing it. And once again, really glad I don't see Crispin in the audience, but in that suit, in that heat, those kids love it. So also, just wanted to give a quick shout out. This is not necessarily a school district, but to the Girl Scouts in our community. You know, I am a cookie manager of my daughter's troop. Cookie sales just ended, so I hope you all are getting over that PTSD, and that you're able to remember these girls out there are doing amazing things, and our learning skills, and more importantly, they've raised funds throughout the city that we've all supported, that'll let them do these amazing things. Really appropriate in Women's History Month, that we're building up young leaders in our girls. And then two final things, Terrence mentioned it, but that spelling bee, I mean, I judged that whole thing. I think it was about seven hours. I have never been so inspired, you know, sort of just watching my own kids do things. The, I think I knew kind of what I was expecting, and, you know, I talked to another couple of people there, and it's like, oh, yeah, we saw Akila and the bee like 10, 20 years ago, but we didn't really know what it was, to see people like 10 feet in front of you, just like spelling these words that I don't even know how they can spell them. And even when we went, you know, into the random list of words that were just out of the dictionary, and they're like, oh, well, now that I know the root of that word, you know, I think I know it's going to be spelled this way. And just really inspiring. And Terrence, once again, I mean, you are a treasure to this district. I am so glad that we have you here. Finally, just wanted to say I had a great time going to the Pocket Girls softball kickoff. You know, it's great that as a school district, we get to share with our community our spaces so that we can support the kids in our area who are students in our district, but they're also, you know, students after school gets out, and to have places for them to go. You know, it can be challenging sometimes trying to offer our spaces, but making it happen, I really thank staff, and I thank our community partners for continuing to work with us. And it's really exciting to see the girls out there, you know, doing amazing things with softball as well. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
All right. I just have a quick announcement, and that there is a mural unveiling. I don't know if Superintendent Allen, you were going to talk about the mural unveiling at MEWOC? Okay, if you were not, then I will mention it real quick. I just want to mention that at MEWOC Middle School, we'll have a mural unveiling that'll be taking place on the Saturday, so March 30th, in collaboration with Native Dad Network and a couple other folks. So I just think it's exciting that the community will be able to unveil a mural that's really dedicated to our Indigenous, our Native American community, kind of for the people, by the people situation, where we actually have community putting up the mural and starting that transition to really ensure that the full transition to MEWOC Middle School is complete and done with celebrations that includes the community that, which will be represented and honored going forward with that name. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll say last is the president's report. I will probably never provide a president's report, because this is a job that we do here. Sharing by my colleagues in the community is extremely important. If I were to report on anything, I'd be talking about things that we're doing as your board to improve and make correction to things that need to be corrected. And a lot of it really is just us coming together and finding ways to communicate that's helpful for our students here. So, because if I do a president's report, I start talking about myself, and it's not what this is about. It's about our students. So, we are good. I'm going to move on. Consent agenda. Any public comments, sir?
No.
First up, do we have a motion to approve all items on consent agenda? Okay, student preferential vote? Wow, that was fast.
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
All that. All righty. And we're finishing awful early, y'all.
She said it.
Item 14. Okay, item 14, business and financial information reports received.
President Phillips, we do have one speaker for item 14.
Oh. Yes, please.
Mo Kashmir?
I was just staring at you. I knew that was coming.
Hey, everybody. Mo Kashmir here, a parent of a student at MEWOC. I just know that we're talking about enrollment in this item. I would just encourage the board to do a deep dive on the enrollment of this district long-term. I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but I did a report on it once, and I think we found like, we lost something like a third of our students over a 10-year period. And I know that our enrollment, the more and more it shrinks, the harder and harder our budget issues become. So I would just urge this group to have a special study committee or something, looking at long-term what's happened with enrollment, and how to make sure that we're growing enrollment in the future, and so that we, instead of being a shrinking school district, become one that's growing again. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, future board meetings. Reading it slowly for those who are writing this down and actually want to retain the information. April 4, 2024, 5:00 PM is our closed session, 6:30 PM is open session here at CERNAS Center. April 18, 2024, 5:00 PM is closed session, 6:30 is open session here at Center, at CERNAS Center. And as I slowly draw my star and say item 16, all in favor? We're good. Thank you very much, y'all.